...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Kimball.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Rose.
Here.
Counselor Angeloni. Counselor Caprio. Counselor Judy.
Here.
Counselor Frazega. Counselor Fawnin.
Here.
Counselor Pucci.
Here.
Counselor Wentworth.
Here.
I have a motion to approve the minutes for April seventeenth, two thousand twelve, special WPCA.
I'm moving the motion.
Second?
Moved by Counselor Fucy, seconded by Deputy Mayor Rose. Roll call.
Mayor Kimball.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Judy.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Epstein.
Counselor Pucci.
Yes.
Counselor Wentworth.
Yes.
Water Pollution Control Authority Agenda, Item Three, Correspondence Citizen Statement. Item Four, Unfinished Business Discussion in Action, Possible Extension for Sanitary Sewers Gale Drive.
Good evening. If I could just do a, just a quick recap of where we are with the potential of this issue, and then we can bring it up for a discussion. Basically, residents of Gale Drive are requested. We look into the possible extension of sanitary sewers on portion of Gale Drive. This was really, this was triggered by the fact that the town has plans to reconstruct that portion of Gale Drive, which would require the pavement to be replaced, we'd be basically grinding it up and replacing it. And the thought was, look at the potential, putting sanitary sewers in Gale Drive at this time, prior to that work being done. My office looked at the potential costs and the, you know, potential limits of extending sanitary sewers in Gale Drive. Basically, I looked at, there's about six houses that could be served by an extension of a common low-pressure, small-diameter force made, into which each property owner would be required to purchase and install a sanitary sewer grinding pump, and then pump into that line, into the existing sanitary sewer line in Gale Drive. The reason why I stopped short, there's a major brook crossing that would require extensive work, and we've also looked at this several times in the past, dating back to about nineteen ninety-five, and the interest always seemed to be generally within the limits I marked out on that map, which includes about a half dozen houses that could be potentially serviced. I estimated the cost, and the estimate was about fourteen thousand dollars per house to install the small-diameter, common, low-pressure force made, with the limits of the potential project. Again, on top of that, they have about ten to fifteen thousand dollars for grinder pump costs on their own, and the connection to the sanitary sewer. We did send out a survey, another six homes, basically, three have responded that they were in favor of extending sanitary sewers to service the property. Two of them have expressed, we're here at the public hearing in March, and expressed that they have a problem with their onsite septic system. The other person that expressed an interest in having the sanitary sewers installed indicated he did not have a problem, but he'd be interested in the potential down the road, being able to die in. The other people, I have one other response, the person was not in favor of it, favor of the extension of sanitary sewers, and two people were basically silent on the issue, did not respond. And we, but when we sent out the questionnaire, we indicated to them, no response would be taken as a not interested response. That's pretty much where we are. Again, like I said, we've looked at this over a number of years, this is a higher response than we have seen in the past, but we're looking at a, basically, a fifty percent interest in extension of the lines. I'll just throw one other thing out, when this was looked at, I think in the first time in nineteen ninety-five, the town council had just gone through the White Hollow Sewer Project, and we had a number of appeals to the assessments, and at that time, the town council, WPCA, indicated they were very concerned about providing sewers if there wasn't, you know, a majority or a very high percentage of people. In two thousand five, the Water Pollution Control Authority actually told the two people that had the worst problem, that if they could get easements across the other, the frontage of the other properties that they'd have to pass by, they could install their old line and connect it to the sanitary sewer. That's a little different than putting it in the street, because we don't want private lines running down the street, it just doesn't work, doesn't work out well. So again, that's the overall history, that's what we have. I've included some of the responses and the correspondence, again, the people submitted, and again, there was some comments that come up at the March public hearing meeting. If there's interest in moving it forward, then we have the issue of funding it. It's not a big, you know, it's not an expensive project. In the past, we've always bonded them, the potential is to look through capital reserves if, to fund it. Normally, we charge the underlying interest rate for bonding, well, in this case, if we didn't do that, there wouldn't be an underlying interest rate, we'd have to, I'd have to talk to Anthony and come up with, you know, an appropriate carrying cost for letting him money.
Kurt, if the two bits said they could get right away, are those the two of the worst ones?
Those are the worst ones, yeah. And the issue that came up, and I've talked to these people, well, one of them, there's only one property away, but they've got to cross the driveway, there's some trees, you know, there's some trees.
So you haven't had any luck getting a proper way?
Yeah, in order to get that, to get an easement, and...
And what happens if we go, if fifty percent, if we do install them, how many years do you have to pay it off? Is it twenty?
Well, generally, it'll go on twenty years. And that's what I put together in the packet, provided to them, to allow them to pay it off over twenty years. I mean, the estimated cost for a fourteen thousand dollar assessment were about nineteen thousand, I believe, at the end of twenty years, yeah, about nineteen thousand five hundred at the end of twenty years.
And you do pay taxes?
Yeah, I think the maximum, and it varies, it's a declining number, I believe the maximum was about twelve hundred thirty-nine dollars.
A year?
A year, for an estimate, that's for the assessment, and then they have a user fee.
I think the average was about a thousand dollars. Does not include the cost of the, therefore, of the sewer.
That's correct. They all require a grinder pump, and they, you know, that estimate was an additional kind of fifteen dollars, which I got from contractors. Let's see.
Kurt, if it's not done now, in conjunction with the road reconstruction project, how much additional will we be talking about per house, put in this?
Well, it's a rough number, twenty, maybe twenty percent.
Additional?
Yeah. And again, that's a rough number, and the, again, there's that time, if everything goes up, well, then that's...
No, I'm talking about twenty dollars.
But just, but just the cost of pavement. Because really, what we're talking about, the, you know, temporary and permanent pavement, you know, we could potentially save them, they have to do temporary pavement, but it's the permanent pavement that we could save them potentially.
Is there any way of installing the dry lines, well, if you're going to, are you going to repave the whole road, is that what you're doing there?
Well, yeah, that road's got to get ground up and repaved. I mean, we have it in our...
While you have it open, is there any way of putting dry lines in there in case we don't get to the point where they're going to need it, and we're going to break up the road again?
Well, that cost would be the cost that we're showing right here, the estimated cost. That's equivalent to putting the line, you know, if you're putting the line in, and just doing temporary pavement, which would be included in the, the cost of homeowner, they would have to pick that up. So it's, the cost of putting the dry line is essentially what we're doing. And it's the property owner's option of hooking up or not. So, it's the same thing.
Because it's a low-pressure force.
It's a low-pressure, yeah, I mean, we're putting the line in, and that's the estimate for the cost, and what I sort of backed out is the cost of permanent pavement. What I did do, also, I did include any engineering costs, I mean, it's a pretty straightforward thing, so I, you know, put it, you know, something I would do, and we wouldn't pass that cost on to somebody, it's pretty straightforward.
In your fees, Kurt, did you, did you pay any percentage of it out of the general taxation, like all the others?
I haven't taken any, anything out, that's a hundred percent of the estimated cost at this point. Like I said, what I did do was try not to, like, engineering costs for design, inspection...
So you would be doing that?
Yeah, and sort of throwing that in, because it's pretty straightforward. Again, for discussion, I haven't written anything up, I just want to get it back on, you know, you heard from the public, those two people that were here at the last meeting. We go from there, basically, whether we decide to project, and we have to put the financial place.
They have contact with the people, they have to have the right of way far in there, they're not, they're not going to be...
What, I was told by the property owner, number, I think it's number twenty, they couldn't get the right of way over eighteen, and some of the other ones. And again, what they expressed to me was, those property owners had concern, the impact on their driveway landscaping that they may have done on their property, that had some impacts. I have it, East Shore, I mean, I think there's a letter in the air from about two thousand five, some of their testing, you know, we have, certainly, East Shore generally is in favor of, you know, if you can put a sewer in, they prefer sanitary sewer. To my knowledge, there's been no testing done or any follow-up. I mean, the last thing I saw on the air that, on one of the properties, said they would have to get a professional engineer to evaluate and design repairs to the system if they were to, you know, to do such.
I think you got fifty percent of the people that are in favor of it, and some of those people we heard from are dramatically changing their lives to live with the system that they have. I think it's, it's really our responsibility to, you know, get the line in and get it working for some people.
I agree with Mike, you know, I'd be the last person to say that, you know, I'm from the government and here to help, but this only makes sense, and, you know, I do occasionally repair some pretty tough septic systems, you know, you're not getting them repaired for this kind of money, and you're certainly not getting them, you know, and when you do get them repaired, you owe the money right then and there, or half of it upfront or something, and some of these repairs are thirty, forty thousand dollars, or, but, so, we've got three out of six that want them, and the other three, you know, just don't...
Will need them eventually.
They just don't realize that they want them. And having lived through the White Hollow sewer thing, and, you know, being on the council at the time when we did it, and then being here and seeing us win every court case that came up by a landslide, there's certainly a benefit to the property. These people with failed systems can't add on to their house, some of them can't use their water, they can't put a swimming pool in, a sewer line goes by, and their property just opened up to, you know, whatever they can do, meaning zoning, not having that headache anymore, so, so I would support moving this forward.
I agree with Al, I think it's very important, some of those people, their lives are miserable because of this situation.
Absolutely, you heard it at the public hearing, some big impacts to some of those. I mean, if the consensus is go that way, then get together with Anthony and Rich and try to, you know, craft, we have to look, you know, we put together something regarding the funding, and have a motion back to the WPC at an upcoming meeting to authorize it along with funding for the project.
Can we get some homeowners?
Yep.
Excuse me, can we get some direction? Al had mentioned the subsidy, and I know Joanne had mentioned it in a previous meeting, whether the town is in a position to help subsidize, as there were subsidies in the past when the federal grant money was available. As we're calculating this out, this is an eighty-four thousand dollar project, plus the cost of money on top of it, so it's not, twenty percent would not be a lot of money, but it would help defray some of the individual costs, there's only six homeowners involved. So, we'd like to get some direction from you at some point, if you want to...
Can you just come back to the rest of the figures, let them figure again, and we can think about that.
Okay.
Give us the two figures, give us a hundred, and give us the eighty-twenty. Your fourteen thousand dollars anticipates one hundred percent of the cost being picked up by the homeowners.
That's correct.
And the cost of the paving being picked up by the town?
Well, it'd have to be temporary paving, we'd have to do hatching, we're going to go reconstruct the road, so...
That's twenty percent by itself that would normally be part of the cost of installing the sewers if the road wasn't being done, so indirectly, the town is providing twenty percent subsidy. Right. And providing...
About engineering, the whole idea is not to start, to pass that cost on, or something like that. We'll get the ball rolling.
Yep. Sounds good.
Okay, so, we'll get something back to you at an upcoming meeting for action, and we'll discuss it from there.
And just, just clear this up, I think I know the answer, but, so, if there's three of them that don't need it now, they don't have to hook in, and if you don't hook in, you're not paying a sewer user fee.
You're not paying a sewer user fee, that's correct.
Right, so, so they would be paying for the hookup that would be there if they ever sold the house, or if a new family moved in and said, wow, I got to use some water. It would be there, but, so, for anyone who really, whose system is working fine, of these six, they don't have to tie in, and they would not be charged a sewer user fee.
That's correct.
But they have to pay the assessment.
They have to pay the, they have to pay that, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
And then if they hook up on a later date, they'd be up for the same...
Yeah, they could hook up two years from now, five years from now, whatever, it's all stubbed off up to their property at that time, they make a connection, just like on the original sewers, where you've got people...
So you get the connection close enough...
Still have it hooked up.
So the connection is close enough where you don't have to dig this deep enough, they just...
That's right, we bring that line off the pavement.
Yeah, they'll be on the lateral.
The lateral is there.
These are small pipes, too, there's not a...
The good thing about these, gram, it's not a real deep line, you got to have four and a half feet cover, it's like putting a water main in, it's a little, a little more straightforward than doing some of these deep sanitary sewers. Okay? Okay.
I don't know how we cannot do a separate...
Okay, sorry, we'll come back at the WPCA in June.
That's fine, that's great.
Thank you, Kurt.
Thank you.
Item five, new business. Citizen Statement Petition.
I'm glad to see you're moving forward, and I hope you stay moving forward with this, because first of all, like Kurt says, you're going to put in a new road, and you know yourself, once you put in a new road, and then you do anything to it, the integrity and the lifetime of that new road is cut in half to maybe two-thirds, because now you've got that seepage, and that crack, and the frost eaves, so, again, it saves the town money in the long run, it saves the citizens' money, because again, the road will not be dug up once it's installed, and I believe that's a little line area, it's wet anyway, isn't it, down there? Do you want to install water in the area?
Oh, the lower, the lower part of that.
Yeah, so, anywhere that you allow water to get into a new road, you know it's trouble, so again, in an effort to save the town some money, and like, like the story is, I couldn't believe that gentleman says, you know, his family room fills up with human waste, come on now, that's not good.
Moving on to the regular town council agenda, item seven, reports of committees, boards, and commissions. Item A, Emergency Communications Subcommittee.
We haven't met since the last meeting, but I'm sure the town manager has some contact because a letter came out from...
The letter came out from CMed indicating that the grant application that you have authorized at the last meeting had been executed and set up to the state office of emergency telecommunications. We received an acknowledgement that that was the first such application that was sent up for regionalization of emergency communications under the new program, and we also heard today that the seventy-five cent surcharge that comes with your phone bill on the nine-one-one service is, had passed both the senate and the house, I believe, as of today, so they're optimistic, there will be a funding source for these grants, and they're waiting on the end of the legislative session, which I believe is May ninth through twelfth this year, it's a short session this year, so as soon as that happens, we should be in line, and then we'll see where it goes.
Potato and Corn Festival.
I can give a brief report on that, we're working with the committee on, in keeping with town practices, as we have in the past, coordinating contracts for entertainment, Anthony will be involved with that, as he has been in the past, and purchasing staff as well. I think I told you at the last meeting, we've met with the town staff to coordinate facilities, there's some electrical upgrades that they've requested, that the Public Works Director, Mr. Morel, will be coordinating, and we're working on vendors, there's a mandatory meeting coming up in June, with a follow-up meeting for all food vendors, health department will be there, the fire marshal, the building official, and I think the representatives from the committee as well, to make sure that all of the food vendors get the same message. One of the things that was a, that will be an improvement this year is, they've done away with the individual tents behind the main tent, so all the food vendors will be under a provided tent by the tent vendor, so it'll be all professionally installed with a gutter system, so we won't have the rain issues that we've had in the past, and therefore, some of the electrical service, even the GFIs were break, were popping because the water was getting in, infiltrating through the tent poles and so forth, so, it's a big improvement, there's a smaller charge, upcharge for that, but it's well worth it, and the vendors seem to be cooperative with that.
And they're on fire rate?
Yes, yes, they would be on fire rate.
Item eight, town manager's report.
I'll just follow up on the written report that I gave you at the end of last week, confirming there were two letters sent out to the construction team, the design team on MBIS, to Turner, Nafis, and Young, and to coordinate work from Ferguson for the HVAC system repairs, and coordinated effort to make sure that that system is functioning properly. That was the subject of a, an inspection that was done by the mechanical design firm as commissioned by the permanent project building committee. The superintendent also sent a letter to the school facilities unit to clarify some of the issues around expenses and reimbursement, I think you have a copy of that letter in your, in your packet, there is some confusion as to what the numbers are, and I need to sit with Anthony to go over what our representative at Turner presented, and what was submitted on our behalf by the superintendent's office, so we'll be working on that as a major priority in the next week. There's nothing new to report on the high school roof project, the swatchick project, the town engineer has the updated plans and specifications in his office for review, it will go to the purchasing agent after that for boilerplate on the plant inspect, we are waiting on the final budget number before it goes, goes out the bid to determine which will be add alternates and which will be part of the, of the base bid, so that project is shaping up, and again, the goal is to have sod down by Labor Day on the infield of the, on the infield and outfield of the baseball field, and it looks like we're in shape to do that. You have in your packet this evening, a draft of the Stanley T. Williams Community and Senior Center, that was prepared by Solomon and Associates at the request of the permanent project building committee, and this is the revised plan that was done after the reallocation of the two-hundred-and-ninety-six thousand dollars, so, it's still not elaborate, but it is highly functional, and accomplishes what I believe we need to accomplish to get in the door, and to occupy the building, meeting ADA codes. There are certain basic things that I believe were discussed in this room by the council that have been incorporated into the plan, handicap access panels, paddles like we have out here, those kinds of basics that should be part of any public building, so, it's not extravagant, but, but the plan is here, if you have any comments, I, we'd be happy to share them with the building committee. Also, on the road improvement program, the public works director, town engineer in my office have been coordinating some of the project money, we will be having a more detailed discussion, and we added it to the draft agenda for the finance subcommittee, to go over the, where the funding is coming from for certain drainage projects, and who the likely contractors would be under our equipment and labor bids, who could address some of these, some of these issues. We are in, as you all know, in union negotiations, but the state comptroller's office had sent out the information about the healthcare options, we have met with the state comptroller's office, and their consultant, and our insurance consultant, Dave Matthew, who works for both us and the Board of Education, Anthony attended, and we are waiting on some comparison numbers. It appears that the savings that they projected, close to five-hundred thousand dollars townwide, are very realistic, that the plan design is fairly well reflective of what our employees are getting, with some improvements.
Paying.
Yes, and, and we don't want to oversell it at this point in time, but we think we can achieve some substantial savings on both the town side and so forth, so we will, until we get the numbers back, we will not be sitting down with, with the unions to go over this, we need to analyze it ourselves, with the Board of Education, the business of insurance, see what it looks like, then we'll be approaching the unions. If it's an improvement, the negotiation of that impact is, is not that difficult, so the savings will be achievable. We have a request that came in, and on my manager's report, in the past, we talked about emergency services and regional dispatch, as part of our conversations about regional dispatch, it became apparent, or is apparent, that we need to do a replacement for Phil Stumpey, who is retiring on May fourteenth. That request had come previously from the chief of police, as you can well imagine, given the other variables that are at play, this is not something we wanted to rush into until we considered all of the options. We now have the opportunity, and I think we, we really should move forward, at least for, on a temporary basis, to fill that position, and it's looking like the grant application that was written for the regional dispatch with CMed has the earliest opportunity to start operations as November, so we're looking at a timeframe from now, from mid-May to November, that we would incur some additional, significant additional cost in overtime, and wear on, wear and tear on the employees. So, we have some, we have cooperation from the clerical union, and if you'd like to take action tonight, you can add that to the agenda, if you'd like to have a further discussion, you can add an executive session, or a non-meeting for that purpose at the end, and then take further action.
So you're looking for a temporary, is what you're saying, not a permanent?
Looking, that's the equivalent, yes, it would be a temporary release of the hiring freeze, hire somebody for that period of time.
Right, well, the position, is it going to be temporary, or is it going to be a permanent position?
It's a permanent position, with an understanding with the union that this is the last person in, so if, we are no longer in that, in that, so, and in fact, it's a temporary position.
So it's going to be much more difficult to fill, because nobody's going to want to come for three, or four, or five months, and there's a lot of training and schooling that has to go with that. There was a thing about a lateral movement, but somebody's not going to make a lateral movement if it's a temporary position.
There are some details that I really can't get into.
Right.
At this point in time.
Right, we need to talk about it later.
And that is the end of my manager's report.
Thank you, any questions?
I'll save it for later.
Community events and presentations. Citizen Statement, Petition, and Correspondence. I have one thing, tragically, on Sunday morning, there was a fire on...
Tragically, on Sunday morning, there was a fire on Fifteen Deep Street. I'm a council official, live very close by there as well as myself. We're a close-knit community. This Garrett family, unfortunate, thank God, you know, their family is safe, all their pets. However, they did lose a lot of, all of their possessions in their home. Marilyn and her husband, they have four children, five dogs, and they're all safe. And, you know, as you can imagine, losing your home, your clothes, all your valuables, necessities. We're trying to put together a fundraiser, you know, come together to help these people. Town Hall, I believe, is accepting gift cards, donations, you know, to help their immediate needs. If anyone has interest in helping or assisting the family, I think they can contact the town manager's office or Lisa Brain possibly. And again, you know, thank God they have smoke detectors. I happened to be driving by and saw a fire and it happened very quick. And once again, our fire department did a fabulous job, so. Any other statements? Reservations and appointments. A, reappointment, Sharie Dolan to the Ethics Commission, term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand and thirteen.
I'll second.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Rose, seconded by Councilor Floyd Upan.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Duty?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fuji?
Yeah.
Counselor Wentworth?
Yes.
Item B, reappointment, Michael Burton to the Ethics Commission, term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand and fourteen.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Wentworth, seconded by Counselor Duty. Roll call?
No, Fuji.
Oh, Fuji, I'm sorry.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Duty?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fuji?
Yes.
Counselor Wentworth?
Yes.
C, reappointment, William Berger's Ethics Commission, term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand and fourteen.
I'll move it.
Moved by Counselor Duty, seconded by Counselor Duty.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Duty?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fuji?
Yes.
Counselor Wentworth, yes.
Before we get off that, maybe John can answer this or anybody that can answer this. So we have an ethics commission, ethics committee, board of ethics, what is it called? Ethics commission? So, does it meet regularly?
That's what I was going to ask when it was going to be.
Does it meet only when there's something that it has to meet about? And can a citizen from the town call up and say, hey, I think the ethics commission should look at something? Or do they only look at stuff the town council sends them? So I've been involved in this a long time and I have no idea how the ethics commission works, so I figured this is a good time to ask the question.
Boy, actually, I got a call from the town clerk's office a couple of weeks ago, two or three weeks ago, on the ethics commission subject. And apparently, they're not some secret society, but they're terribly under-appointed right now. There are some people on there, under our charter, people continue to serve until their replacement is qualified. We talked about that. Actually, I think the question was in the context of majority, minority representation and stuff. I think we also talked about the need to look at their, not their bylaws, but whatever procedures that they have. I would not think that they would, that they would meet on a regular basis. I, in thirty years of being town attorney, I've never been asked to.
Never answered a question for him.
Never, never been asked by the talent, by the board of ethics or the ethics commission and although I think when I was a town council person, somebody got real upset with me once. Anyway, it was the board of ed, so. No, I think, I think it's something that ought to be looked into in terms of developing procedures. I think they meet on a case-by-case basis, although there haven't been any cases to my knowledge.
Well, since we're open in the charter right now, is there something that we can do in the charter revision also?
Yeah, I think.
Just have another question. What power do they have if something is unethical?
I think their power is to, is to make a judgment and refer to the town council. If there are some.
Slap somebody on the wrist or, you know, say, look, we recommend that this, this and this. Is that what they do?
Well, the council does have some powers in terms of removing members of boards or commissions if they committed an infraction of some kind. There are, in rare cases, there's a monetary penalty. But it's something that, you know, it's, the ethics commission in one sense is not a bad concept to enliven because it's, it's an intermediate ground between having no outlet at all to have something questioned and going for the United States Supreme Court. A lot of the things that people complain about in terms of, there's got to be a law, there should be a lawsuit, really boil down to someone's, you know, opinion that people are not operating in good faith or in the best interests of the town. And that might be something that.
So what power does the council have? Our recommendation?
Again, it would depend on what the violation is. If it's a conflict of interest, the, a member can be censured or if it's a conflict of offices or something like that, a person can be removed. If it, if it involves some sort of misappropriation, the council would probably be the body to refer to further investigation by the authorities.
Or actions not in the best interests of the town or whatever?
Well, not to the, not for that, but it depends on, that's a general phrase. I mean.
Well, it depends what the actions are.
It's not, I, you know, I think, I'm not aware of any, I'm not aware of any regulations that the board of ethics has. You don't want it to go the other way, to be a witch hunt type of thing or just to retaliate against somebody.
No, but things should be on the up and up. People are keeping an eye on us and everybody else.
Right, right.
The town clerks send, send out the rules of the ethics commission. They do have their own rules of procedure that we could send out and a copy of the ethics code that's in the book of ordinance.
Yeah, we, we, that's what we discussed, we're trying to fill that commission. And there are some people who are alive and some people who are not alive who are.
How many items do we have on that commission that you're working on?
I'm not, I'm not quite sure. I don't, I, I'm thinking like five or six, but I'm not sure.
And what's it consist of, a total of what, twelve, ten?
No, less than that.
Less than that?
Yeah.
So basically, we got three people out of like nine people, is what you're saying?
You know.
Six out of.
Yeah, yeah, five or six, I think, out of, out of the.
You know, something we need to get on or something we need to do with charter revision too.
Well, that's an item on the agenda and.
So how would it work if the, say, a citizen had a question complaining about something and they called Richard's office? Is that something that Richard would then say, hey, you know what, I'll refer this to the ethics commission?
I refer them to the town clerk directly.
So the town clerk would send everything to the ethics committee? That's how it works?
Yes, I don't, I'm not the conduit. The town council's not the conduit, the town clerk is.
For the town clerk's sake, you learn something every, so you're telling us that Lisa hasn't sent anybody there in thirty years?
Lisa hasn't been there in thirty?
It's only five years old.
Yeah, it was made a few years ago.
Yeah, actually, Lisa told me they are going to be having a meeting. They did have a meeting and they're working on a few items, procedure.
And you know, I want to clear something up. I was, I was educating myself. I don't think there's a whole bunch of stuff going on unethical in town, you know, because you know, if I did, I would say it right here. But I was just, I'm like, okay, we got this ethics commission, how does a citizen? So you would go to the town clerk if you don't agree with something going on in town and she would decide or either answer your question?
She has, she has.
Or she has the, the rules from, you know.
Well, it's not so much if you don't agree, it's just if you think something's not right.
Right, you go to hers first.
Yeah.
Section thirty-five of the code does have it, is quite complete and does have a complaint procedure. And it does, the ethics commission can recommend sanctions to be enforced by the town council of fines up to a hundred dollars or removal from office. And it would be the town council's consideration and action to do that.
And I think the complaints have to be in writing?
The complaint has to be in writing. They do go through the town clerk's office.
Notarized?
Any individual can, any individual can file it.
Okay.
They don't, they don't have to go through a town council person or anything like that.
So I will speak with Lisa and have her produce a set of the ordinance and the rules. I think there's a couple of minor conflicts in the way the rules and the ordinance read, so they have to, when they meet, they have to fine tune those procedures. It's like a matter of days and dates and.
Give us the openings there to what we need to fill.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Item twelve, unfinished business discussion in action. A, charter revision. Charter revision did have a public hearing. We have received our charge. We have the meeting May third, July twenty-fourth day. So we'll be discussing the items that were presented. Item B, North Bramford High School Roof.
In my agenda comments, I mentioned that there's no new information on the, on the project itself, other than what we need to do for the next phase, which would be commission architect, appropriate money and so forth. So you took that discussion up in the capital plan and the budgeting for that, so.
I have one question on that. I remember last year, we did a temporary fix with the four-inch pipe.
Yes.
Is that something we're going to address, like during the summer now? Or is that working and we're going to keep it?
My understanding is that it's, it's been working since it was installed and in fact, they hard piped it down into the drain off the building, so it has improved the situation. My understanding with, with Mr. Chody from the Board of Education is that he will report to us any leak, new leaks that come up for the record, but they're taking care of any repairs and he has not in the last couple of months reported any leaks to me.
So it turned into a fix?
I think it's working.
Good.
We're in a drought. Not today, it ruined my call.
Item thirteen, new business discussion in action. Item A, East Shore Health District B schedule. Hi, Michael. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Michael Pasqueso. I'm the Director of Health for the East Shore District Health Department. It's my understanding, there's been some questions, some concerns about our fees. And what I have is, I have a presentation that I would like to give to you and if possible, go through it and maybe that will clarify some questions, if that's okay? Sure. So inside the, inside the packet, you're going to find a presentation that was given in two thousand and eleven. That's what the fees were reviewed and approved. Your fee increase in two thousand and twelve. Also in the packet, I put a copy of our annual report on all the services we offer, just as an overview as what we're going to do as a local health district.
I have a question for you. Are your, your fees set by you or by the state? Do you have a mandate from the state?
Our, our fees are set by the board of directors. And we have representation from all three towns at our board of directors meeting and that's what it was set, and others set last year.
But nothing comes down from the state that says we'll be more revenue or anything like that?
You know, as a, as a health district, common practice, even municipalities, fees are charged to restaurants.
Right.
And they take that into account for our funding. And in some cases, they set caps. So if it's okay, I'll take you through this presentation real quick and kind of explain the process and how we came about of increasing the fees. And then after, I'll take any questions. So the presentation you have right now in two thousand and eleven was presented to the East Shore District Health Department Board of Directors. And also, we brought in a group of restaurants to our office and we talked to some other business owners about this fee increase. It also went through a staff review, both administrative staff and field staff, because we wanted to make sure that it was fair, that it flowed. And it wasn't just a fee increase, it was also process and customer service improvements. So what we did is, the process started about a year and a half ago and we looked at similar communities around the state and we did a comparison of those communities. And we also talked to the State Department of Public Health and we went through every single fee, every single process. Why the change fee? For many reasons. Years ago, a lot of fees were à la carte. There was an application fee. There was a fee to get copies of reports, there were inspection fees, there were soil fees, there were just all these fees. There were sitting fees, depending on how many seats you have. The codes have changed so much, we need to bring it up to, up to today's standards and just simplify it. Also, to go to a process review, we processed so many licenses that there were so many fees along the way, so what we did is we eliminated some of those fees and just streamlined the process. And we also wanted to be consistent with other towns and other communities. A license is a license across the state of Connecticut and it really should be standardized in some way. So what we did is, we did a data survey. So we said, okay, here are our fees. How do they compare to other communities all around the state? At around the same time, the State Department of Public Health did a survey of all municipalities and health districts around the state and we used that data. And then we, I said to the staff, at this point, I really want to find out how we're doing. So we did a, a survey for our customers, some of the restaurants. That survey is at the end of the sheet or the packet. So we started, we have a partnership with Southern Connecticut State University, so we got an intern who was interested in data and she did a lot of the research for us. She spent a semester in our office reviewing all the fees and basically crunching the numbers. What we looked for is we looked for trends. For instance, we charged by class or by number of seats. There were separate fees for catering, temporary events, wells, septic, there were just so many fees and we really wanted to streamline the fees. And we also contacted ourselves. Some of the folks in the survey that the state did, did not answer the survey, so we reached out to them and some of them responded to us. As part of the process, we really wanted to hear what the restaurant owners had to say, specifically restaurant owners, because the fees were going to affect them. My background is, I worked in the food service industry. I worked in retail, customer service is really important. I've been through this process in other municipalities before and other positions and every time you go through it, a lot of times, the fees are just changed and it's three, 10%, whatever the case may be. And I really wanted to hear what they had to say. And so we invited 21 restaurants, we had a roundtable discussion and of the 21 folks, eight people participated. We also posted it on our website. During that time, the inspectors would, when they were doing regular inspections, reached out to some of the folks that they were inspecting and talked to them about what changes they wanted to see. And then we had a public hearing before, so there was a process. Whenever we raise fees in any way, very similar to a municipality, we have to go through a public hearing process. And then we brought to the board of directors and it was approved. Some example of the fee changes. Some example of the fee changes, if you were a caterer, you would be able to cater, but yet you were charged temporary food service event license. So if you went to the corn and potato festival, if you went to the Branford Festival or other town festivals within a district, you were getting charged for those extra fees. And one of the things a caterer said to us, and they brought this to us, he said, why, if I'm a caterer and I can serve food, why do I have to pay these fees? And we looked at it, we looked at the trends, and we agreed with them. And so, as part of their catering license, you can serve food without any additional fees, any of the three towns, any events. And that was something that they wanted to see. And quite frankly, it makes our life easier. And if you're truly a professional caterer, you shouldn't have to be charged for those fees. We eliminated a lot of fees. We eliminated an application fee, there were delivery fees, so if you delivered pizza, there was a fee for that. Number of seats fees, that was something that just, what would happen is, we had these classifications of different, how many seats you had, you got charged a fee. And so, and I think the cutoff was, the first cutoff was around fourteen. And so we were finding that in time, seats were added and the fees were going up. So that fee was just eliminated. It really shouldn't be charged based on how many seats. It really should be charged on classification. And retail food service, so if you were a restaurant and you had an area where you were selling any kind of products, there was another fee. All those fees were eliminated. Septic fill approval fee was eliminated. And we just really went with the state classification, 'cause that's code. That was what the state of Connecticut's doing. And every single other municipality and health district around the state was doing it, except for us. So we needed to change that. The other thing that we heard from the vendors is, some vendors would serve food, these are mobile vendors, would serve food only a few months or six months out of the year. Others would serve food all year round. We didn't have a seasonal license. And one of the things they brought up to us is, well, why should I get charged the same fee if I'm only paying, or only serving food six months out of the year and they're serving food all year round? So there were two fees. So there's a lesser fee if you only serve food, you know, six months out of the year. And there's been a lot of fee increases around the state. And I think the local health department, because we inspect, and we are, especially with food service, some of those fees, they believe come from us. And they really don't, a lot of the restaurant fees that restaurants pay are fees. There's baker's license, and the state has raised, in some cases, doubled or tripled their fees. And those fees have nothing to do with the East Shore District Health Department. One of the other things that's happening is, for the first time, the district municipalities are getting charged fees. For instance, for mosquito control, the state is charging municipalities an application fee. Something that's never happened before. So there's a lot of fees that we're being charged. And in some cases, municipalities are being charged. And then there's a fats, oils and grease requirement. Well, it is a good requirement, because it really protects the integrity of a public sewer system. And it can be tied into your license if someone doesn't comply, and someone could actually lose your license. A lot of folks think we're the enforcers of that, and we're not. I'll be honest, we do support it. It is a good thing. It protects the system from expensive repairs. And one of the other things I wanted to mention is, during these tough times, some restaurant owners have called us and said, hey, I'm having a hard time. Can you work with us on, you know, our application fee? And what we've done is, we've been flexible and have done payment plans for folks. In some cases, when folks have some hefty repairs to do, we have a meeting, that's an administrative hearing. And what we try to do is, we try to negotiate with them and be as flexible as we can. Sometimes fines, if they can't pass their inspection, what we've done in the past is, we have allowed them to use that money that they would pay us to do some kind of food safety improvement. For instance, recently, someone needed cutting boards, and I think they had like three hundred dollars worth of fees. We allowed them to buy, instead of paying us, buy cutting boards. So we're trying to show some flexibility during these times. And, you know, in general, my personal philosophy is education first, enforcement is always the last resort. And the back is the survey, and there's the schedule fee. So with that up, open up to any questions.
Thank you guys do a fine job. You're in my place all the time, and you guys are professional. It was just a shock to me to see my fees went from one seventy-five to three fifty. But get used to it. There's nothing we can do about it, I guess. You guys do a good job, though, Alex is a good man.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So all of them tripled? I know there, I know I received a couple from vendors, street vendors, that their fee went from seventy dollars to two hundred and fifty dollars. So that must have been the norm across the board.
In some cases.
Your fees tripled.
Some fees did go up more than others.
Tripled.
Some fees did go up more than others. And maybe in that case, that could be true. But what I would say is, we did do a survey. And some of those folks, and that's why we, especially mobile vendors, we did two licenses, a seasonal license and a regular license. I will tell you that in some municipalities, those fees are five hundred to six hundred dollars. And this is a three-town license for mobile vendors. So when you look at it from that standpoint, they, it's really a, it's really a good bargain. I went through these fees myself. And in some cases, I reduced them. And some of the folks who were at our meeting were the mobile vendors.
Michael, typical, typical inspection. Walk me through it. In other words, you're gonna inspect the restaurant. I know they don't notify them. They show up there. Do they just walk in and greet the owner? Or do they just start inspecting?
No, no, they're very friendly. They come in, they greet the owners. Yeah, I know.
I was at a restaurant once, sitting, and I saw.
This is a process I know very well. I was a health inspector for many years myself. I've worked through the ranks and I've been on both sides, not just as an inspector and a director, but I also worked, and my family worked for a food service establishment. Sometimes it's a complex process, but here's how it goes. First, depending on what classification you are, there's class one, two, three, four. And if you're a class one, you get inspected once a year, class two, two, three, four. An inspector should come to the front counter, introduce himself, they should be wearing ID. And they should tell them that I'm here for an inspection and would like to talk to the owner. We always encourage owners or managers to walk around with us. That's not always possible, and I get it, because they get busy. We try to avoid going during the middle of lunch, or in the middle of dinner, in the middle of breakfast. But sometimes, that's when the high-risk behaviors happen, and food board outbreaks. So we do have to go in there now and then. And we would do our inspection, hopefully someone's with us. And at the end of the inspection, the inspector writes up the inspection. And then they go over it with the owner or manager. At that point, in order to pass a food service inspection, you need an eighty or above with no four-point demerit items. A four-point item is something that would, it's so high risk, someone could get sick. For instance, someone would come out of the restroom and not wash their hands and start handling the food. A refrigerator would not be working correctly. So those are the kind of risky behaviors are still what we call egregious, that they would have to fail inspection. So if they pass an inspection with eighty or above, no four-point items, then they'll see us the next inspection. If they fail, then we come back within two weeks. At that point, same process. We do give the restaurants, and the restaurants have an option of requesting an inspection, a scheduled inspection. They know we're coming back anyways. And in that case, we really encourage an owner or manager to walk around with us, because now we're at inspection two. Because if they don't pass this inspection, then things get a little complicated for them and they could lose their license. If they fail, if they pass that inspection, process starts all over again. If they fail, then they're called in for an administrative hearing. And they sit down with myself and the inspector, and we just go over what's going on. The only exception is if something were to happen in a restaurant that, in our opinion, would get people sick immediately. For instance, if they had no running water, no public sewers or.
Temperatures.
Temper, you know, significant temperature violations. Or if we found half the staff was working while they were sick, then we would ask them to close. That's typically how it works. And if something happens during that inspection and a manager or owner feels that they need to be heard, they talk to me. And I sit down with them. Again, customer service makes or breaks an organization, something I learned in going through all three sides, you know, as a, as an employee in a restaurant, as an inspector, and now as a director. Now, that is really important to me, that I get feedback. That's why I did the customer service survey.
Can you tell me the benefit of belonging to East Shore Health versus towns that don't have a public?
Yeah, yes.
Or towns that have their own public health director?
Yeah, I could, I could answer that. Excellent question. Why should you belong to a health district? Districts were created, our district was created in nineteen seventy-four. North Branford has been a member since nineteen seventy-four. As a regional entity or a district, you pull all the resources. So instead of the towns paying for three directors, there's only one director. And we offer full-time public health services. So what the town of North Branford gets for just shy of a hundred thousand dollars a year, you get a full-time director, an assistant director. You get full-time health inspectors, public health nursing. And we do flu clinics and communicable disease surveys. We have a public health educator, we have an emergency preparedness person. So on the service side, that's what you get. If you didn't belong to a health district, there would be no state funding. The state for municipalities under fifty thousand dollars, they get no state funding.
It takes good old boy politics out of the whole situation. If you have a town paid health director, there's politics involved or stuff like that. I've been in a small town for a long time, and know.
That said, there is a process, and we do have a board of directors that I answer to as a chief operating officer.
Yep. I think you guys are doing a good job. I just, you know, with the economy, you know, there's a level of frustration out there.
With the fees.
No better story. And the fees, I can't.
Yeah.
These are a smaller problem compared to food costs. And you are in gas costs.
And I wanted to assure the town of North Branford that we just didn't increase fees. As you can see, this was well thought out. And we really wanted to make sure we could be as fair as we can. And like the town, as an organization, every single fee has gone out for us too. Workman's comp, insurance, oil, gas. And the state keeps charging us more fees and municipalities more fees. And, you know, they keep cutting our revenue sources. It's, it's a tough situation. The one thing I will assure you is, I am as flexible as I can be. And when there's a problem and someone's unhappy, I wanna know about it. And I'm on top of it, and I want to assure your staff. And I hold my staff accountable. And they know that, and if someone crosses the line, I'll address it, you know, and determine if necessary.
I've got some, I've got some, a question and then maybe a comment, or maybe you can answer why you haven't done, haven't, you and the past director hasn't done. And I guess, if I understand it correctly, all of your sanitarians, you know, they'll do, you have people who wears, everybody you have wears like four different hats. They do soil testing, they do septic system inspection, they do repairs, they do new work on septic. And then, and then on the same day, they're gonna go inspect the restaurant, and they may inspect the nail salon. Have you thought about, and also, probably because of the limited funding, you seem to have a fairly high turnover rate. So the frustrations that I hear from people, mostly septic contractors, is that by the luck of the draw, you can get someone out there that really doesn't belong there by themselves. Have you thought of, and you do have some people who are very knowledgeable. But again, it's the luck of the draw. And it used to be, all of the septic contractors, hey, can I have so-and-so to come out? And then, and then it almost thought, maybe the directors thought, oh, well, you know, the contractors are getting too friendly with this guy, so we're gonna send the new kid out. Well, the new kid, number one, has spike heels on, and we're doing soil testing. And number two, doesn't have a clue what they're looking at, but that's who you have to deal with. So again, the complaint that we get in the field of septic installers is, you've got some good people there and somehow manipulate the schedule so your good people are inspecting septic systems. And it's gonna go a lot smoother, and you're, and we're gonna get a lot less, a lot less complaints. And people telling us, get rid of them, they don't know what they're doing. So.
Yeah, like spike heels on.
You know, I exaggerated, but there's definitely people with the wrong shoes on doing soil testing and already died.
I will, I.
Speechless.
So you bring up a very, very interesting point. So first, let's talk about the nature of sanitary and our environmental health specialists. They're a jack-of-all-trades, a master of none. So they do food inspections, they do septic inspections, well inspections. The complaints, we get complaints on everything. And we need folks like that that can do it all. Because there is a high turnover, and the reason why there's a high turnover is because in today's, in today's society, people just flip jobs for, you know, a thousand dollars. There's really no loyalty like there used to be. And a lot of times, when someone does stay, soon as they get vested in a pension, they move on to their next pension. And, you know, and that's changing, you know, with the changes in 401Ks and things like that. So I will acknowledge, it's a, it's a problem with the field. The other thing is, someone has to start somewhere. And we do have some folks that are strong in some areas and need maybe a little more coaching in other areas. And when we have those folks, we try to send them out on two so they can learn, and so there's a system of backups. What I've done over the last, you know, I've been with the district about two years, over the last year, we're starting to do it now, is there are certain folks who, they have a gift in certain areas. And for the hard, complex cases, especially with septic, and, you know, nowadays, almost all lots need professional engineers, to get someone who really has that skill set. Because it just makes things go smoother.
Well, see, I'll clarify it. I think the problem isn't on the new lots with professional engineers. I think it's on a repair where both the contractor and the health department, we're trying to figure this out without an engineer. You know, because you don't wanna have someone have to pay three, four thousand dollars. We want them to put the money into their repair. So I agree, and you guys, you know, will work that way. But, and I've never had it happen to me, but from talking to some other, you know, contractors, they're like, oh my God, this is, you know, some of these people, over the years, I'm not saying that, you know, last week or last month. I'm saying, you know, and you do have some very good people with soil analysis and stuff like that. But it is, it is kind of the luck of the draw. I'm not quite sure what your system is on when a call comes in for a system. It seems like it's a rotating thing.
Yeah, we tried, we tried to rotate. We are obviously gonna be shuffling our inspectors. We're, we're obviously going to be shuffling our inspectors around very soon, just because it's nice to get a fresh face now and then and we are mixing it up a little bit. I've heard some of the, the things, issues you're bringing up and I, I'm addressing it. It's not a perfect system, not going to deny that. Can it be improved? Yes, and I'll do my best to improve it, I could assure you of that. We expect repairs-
So, you just don't have the personnel or you don't have, there, there isn't like enough of one thing each day to have like one expert that just does septic and one guy that just does-
But, but then, but then that-
Their bridge isn't enough.
Systematically, that's a problem if we did it that way because people take vacations. What happens when that person goes on vacation if they don't get that experience? Now, what we can do, what we've been doing, maybe you've seen it yourself, is we send, on some of those real hard repairs, we send two inspectors.
Right.
A seasoned inspector and one that has the line. And on some of these repairs, especially with the new code changes, you know, they're, they're non-code complying systems, they can't even meet fifty percent, we're putting water restrictions on people's properties and, you know, they, those rules are coming about from the state and we're the messenger.
And that's why we voted for the sewer line today. So, okay, all right. Well, I, I mean, there were some, there, I mean, you're here tonight because of, there was some, I mean, you did a good job with your presentation, but you're here because of there was, you know, there was, from the restaurants to the septic, we had heard a bunch of concerns.
Okay, and please, and that's why I'm here. In the end, I'm the bottom line. Let me know and I, you know, I will, I will be as flexible as I can. Sometimes my hands are tied because the state, I mean, there's several cases, I call the state up and say, hey, this is, what can we do here? And they're like, no, this is what they're going to do. And it's like, well, then they're probably going to appeal it and we've actually gone up to Hartford in support of some of the, these, you know, some of the changes that we feel aren't really fair, but, you know, again, our hands are tied on some of, some of these lots.
And then the only other comment I'll make on, on the running of your organization is that the, the thing that I've heard is that possibly you're not as accessible as some of the directors in the past. You know, if you're not happy with a sanitarian that, you know, to, you know, on, on anything or, or an inspection, you know, someone wants to get to either Alex or you to make sure you agree with them. And so, some of the complaints out there, and maybe we were spoiled in the past, is that you're not quite as accessible as, as some of the guys were. And again, I'm not speaking from, I've never had to try and contact you. However, in the past, and, and, you know, I mean, I tell it like it is. I've had, I've had people, when we had Dennis Johnson down there, if one of his new sanitarians told me I had to do something, I wouldn't believe him, but if Dennis told me the same thing, I'd believe him. So, you know, that is the, there is that mindset out there, like, okay, the boss agrees with him and it's over. So, I know you're a busy man, but, and again, I haven't run into that, but some of the guys out there say, you know, we can't get to the, can't get to the boss and maybe you could put out a fire quicker.
Well, I, you know, I carry my cellphone twenty-four seven. I'm not allowed to go out of state without making arrangements for backup. I have to tell the state where I go and my, my staff can get to me at, anytime. I will tell you though, that whenever it comes time to enforcement, the first question I have is what have we done to avoid this situation? Okay? And that's not very popular because enforcement's easy. Just send them in order, make them do it.
Right.
I don't believe that. I believe we need to work with people and there's a process and it frustrates people, but, you know, that's, that's my requirement.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Michael, thanks for coming this evening and I know you made a sacrifice to be here.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Item B, Finance Subcommittee Agenda.
We can go with the sewer, nothing matches. Select it. Could we get an update on, on like delinquent taxes? Yeah, which letter would it be?
Chain.
In general?
In general. Just-
A commercial, residential or?
Automobile.
Noticed a lot more empty houses around town lately, I'll say that.
Yeah.
A lot of them.
Hi, first, I noticed a number-
No, just, just so we can discuss, just open on the agenda so we can discuss. And then, you know, like there are some abandoned properties and I don't know whether banks have figured out that it's cheaper to let a house fall down than to maintain them or what, but, you know, I mean, there's one across the street from the farm that's just a disaster.
They know they're not selling them, so they kind of-
I think they walk away, I think the bank walks away from them or something. I mean, they use to maintain them. Do you have the address on that? I don't know the address. It's plywooded up.
It ordered.
All right. It's just been that way.
It's just before you make the turn, isn't it, Al?
Yeah, we're going-
It's not the blue one, it's the white.
It's the, it's the little one right next to the right away that goes down.
Yeah, there's, there's one, there's one up in the two thousand block of Milltown Avenue. It's been empty for-
I mean, somebody most only.
One on twenty-two.
Or something, somebody.
Yeah, one on Wood.
Yeah, we can send the health director in there.
One on every street.
He could condemn it.
There's one on Summit, there's one on Harrison, there's one on Ledgewood, they're everywhere. They're everywhere.
So, really just in general. All right, I'll, I'll prove it with item J for delinquent taxes. I'll second it.
I know Ken is working on a list of, every two or three years, there's a list provided to council of folks that he wants to-
Excuse one?
-bring to the next level to bring to John for closure, that kind of act, that is combined with this now to come back and probably then in the second meeting of May or three days. So, we'll try and get that for next week.
That was moved by councillor Judy, seconded by councillor Fucy. Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Councillor Caprio?
Yes.
Councillor Duddy?
Yes.
Councillor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councillor Fuči?
Yes.
Councillor Wentworth?
Yes.
Item fourteen, citizen statements and petitions.
I just have one statement to make. Our state, instead of being a hundred and twenty million in the hole, is now two hundred and eighty-five million in the hole. They just figured that one out. So, we're in more of a mess than, than we thought before. I don't know where they are going to come up with it, but they have to come up with it.
I'm going to make a statement, actually as a councillor, but there's no place on the agenda for it, so as a citizen. During the budget process, I, I, I think it was in a heated discussion with, with Joe, but it was, in general, I made a statement that we had looked at some W twos on the Board of Ed side and we had some contracts of non-union people and, and that we had one that didn't match. And after educating myself and learning about TSAs and, and payments to pensions and, and all these things that are written down in footnotes in the contracts and on the back page and, you know, I, I do want to report that, that the, the statement I made there was incorrect and that the W two does match this particular contract that I was talking about, so.
Again, I was trying not to speak, but again, this blight issue, it goes hand-in-hand with empty real estate. Somebody's got to be held accountable for these properties that are deteriorating. There's one up, stood straight from the attorney's house that's falling into further disrepair. Fences are falling over, tree, tree limbs are in the middle of the yard. It's, again, somebody would be trespassing if they went in there, but again, they would get hurt. It's not fair that the property owners on each side who work hard to spend five bucks a gallon for gas to mow their lawn and to have a property next to them that just continually deteriorates. And at what point does it become the town's problem? You know, I've been kind of gently nudging you about this blight, but, and it's going to get worse before it gets better. I mean, it seems that we just have tolerated it now, but again, it's becoming, and it's taking away from the character of the good town we have. You know, it's just, it's nice to go up a, a road and look at nice houses and everybody's pretty good about planting the flowers and putting out nice shrubs and stuff and then you get the eyesore. So, it kind of takes your breath away, oh God, look at that mess. And it's constant and it just, I'm just curious if down the road or on an agenda someplace, there's some way to take care of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to move into executive session.
Moved by councillor Fucy and to include the town attorney and the town manager.
Who's the town attorney and the town manager?
Moved by councillor Fucy, seconded by councillor Wentworth. Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Councillor Caprio?
Yes.
Councillor Duddy?
Yes.
Councillor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councillor Fuči?
Yes.
Councillor Wentworth?
Yes.
If we don't, we can't have it.
Yeah, that's true.
How are you?
Hey, Mike, you know, that house in North Branford.